Good evening and welcome to the September 28, 2021 Regular Meeting of the Gaston County Board of Commissioners. My name is Chad Brown and I represent the Riverbend Township. I would like to welcome our viewers and thank Spectrum Cable and AT&amp;T for making it possible for our citizens and our viewing television livestream audience. I would like to present your Gaston County Commission, beginning on my far right.
Tracy Philbeck, Dallas Township.
I'm Ronnie Worley, South Point Township.
Bob Hovis, Crowder's Mountain Township.
At this time, also Commissioner Kim Johnson has joined us via teleconference. Commissioner Johnson?
Hey, Kim Johnson, Gastonia Township.
Thank you for joining us. And also Commissioner Keeger and Commissioner Fraley had things that could not be a part of tonight's meeting. So with that, I will ask everyone to rise. Commissioner Philbeck will give the invocation and Commissioner Bob Hovis will give the pledge of allegiance. If you'll please stand.
Heavenly Father, we are thankful for the many blessings that you have given us. We're thankful that we live in a free nation. We're thankful for the many men and women who sacrifice daily that we can be free. I ask that you would give us wisdom to make good decisions that will benefit all of our citizens. It's in Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Please join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, for all. Thank you.
Before we get started, I need to do a little housekeeping. This evening Chairman and Vice Chairman could not be in attendance. Our first order of business is for nominations for the Acting Chairman of tonight's board meeting. Are there any nominations from this board?
I so move Chairman Mr. Brown to be our Acting Chairman for tonight's meeting.
Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Philbeck. All in favor? Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Thank you. All those opposed?
First thing on the list tonight is proclamations, commendations, awards, and certificates. I will now ask Commissioner Hovis at the podium to step forward. Thank you, Commissioner Hovis.
It is my pleasure to bring this proclamation forward and it will be part of our consent agenda adoption at this voting meeting tonight to recognize National Hispanic Heritage Month. I don't know if anyone is here who would like to join me. I know Ms. Burris Floyd, not Dr. Burris Floyd, our Inclusion Officer is here and some others. If you'd please join me, I'd appreciate it as I read this proclamation and make it a part of the official record of the board's action. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is an opportunity to celebrate the cultural history and contributions of Hispanic American citizens and highlights their country's achievements and contributions. And whereas, the observation began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon B. Johnson and was observed annually until 1988 when it was expanded by President Ronald Reagan to the period of September the 15th through October the 15th and became National Hispanic Heritage Month and has been celebrated annually since then. And whereas, more than 60 million Americans of Hispanic origin today contribute to our national diversity, enriching the quality of American life with centuries-old traditions that reflect the multi-ethnic and multicultural customs of their communities while adding to their own distinct and dynamic perspectives to the story of our country. And whereas, this observance affords special opportunities to become more knowledgeable about Hispanic heritage and to honor the many Hispanic Americans who represent a significant and fast-growing demographic of Gaston County. We honor the invaluable ways these citizens contribute to our country and county. Therefore, now be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims the month of September the 15th, ending October the 15th, 2021, as National Hispanic Heritage Month and urge all citizens to join us in celebrating in the great contributions of Hispanic Americans to our country, state, and nation. This is to be adopted tonight during our voting portion of the meeting, the 28th, the day of September 2021. And if someone would like to speak, you're welcome to speak as well. That'd be fine. Don't ask me to translate.
Ms. Dwyer, please. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. On behalf of the Hispanic community of Gaston County, thank you very much, everybody. This means a lot, not only for the employees of Gaston County who has Hispanic background, but for the whole Gaston County community. Thank you so much.
Mr. Juan Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I just want to thank you on behalf, again, from the Latin American communities and all the citizens in Gaston County. Gracias, muchas gracias. Thank you.
Would you like to say something in Spanish to the people so maybe they would be more familiar with coming in?
I just did it. But again, thank you again. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
To our Acting Chairman and other commissioners on the dais, as the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Officer for Gaston County, I would just like to thank you for stepping up and taking this bold step. This is a first for Gaston County. It seems like every time we come, we're bringing some good news. So we thank you for honoring our Hispanic-Latino community and for passing this resolution tonight on the consent agenda. We greatly appreciate it and we will be back with more good news. Katrina and Juan are both part of the Multicultural Affairs Committee, so they are working and we have such diversity on that committee. We love what we do. We appreciate your recognition. And we thank our wonderful county manager for making it possible for us to meet and to take care of the business of bringing us all together. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is public hearings. The Commission will now take citizens' comments for five minutes of public hearing. Comments will be taken on the following issues. Zoning text amendment to repeal replace Gaston County Unified Development Ordinance in its entirety in order to incorporate all necessary modifications. To approve the Level 4 incentive grant Trinity Capital Partners. To approve the Level 4 incentive grant Project Keith Corporation. To approve the application for the NCDOC Rural Economic Development Division Building Reuse Grant in support of Project Repel. To request permission to apply for the NCDOT PDT Physical Year 23 Community Transportation Program. Before we begin, let me outline the rules and procedures of the hearing. Citizens wishing to make comments will be recognized by the Chair and then requested to step to the microphone for their comments. Citizens will state their name and address for the record. Comments are limited to three minutes. For all questions, be directed to the Chair for response. The Chair shall rule on all points of order. Do I have a motion to go into public hearing? Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Worley. All in favor? Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. We are now into public hearing. The County Commission will take citizens' comments on public hearing zoning text amendments to repeal and replace the Gaston County Unified Development Ordinance in its entirety to incorporate all necessary modifications. I will now ask Ms. Sarah Penley, Building and Development Services Senior Planner, will provide a brief overview. Once she has completed her comments, citizens' comments will be taken. Ms. Penley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As mentioned, the request tonight is for consideration of zoning text amendments to repeal and replace the Gaston County Unified Development Ordinance in its entirety and to incorporate all necessary modifications. I've broken it down into sections for ease of understanding and would like to begin with the 160D changes, if I can. For background, Chapter 160D is the culmination of years of work, significantly to recodify and modernize city and county development regulations, which would enable legislation. Work on this effort began back in 2013. 160D was established under Session Law 2019-111 and enacted by the General Assembly in June of 2019. Afterwards, it was signed by the Governor in July and Session Law 2019-111 included two parts with different effective dates, which have passed. 160D was drafted with the explicit intent to not make significant substantive changes in land use law, but rather to modernize and standardize the land use law across the state. It also serves to consolidate the local regulation statutes for the counties and the municipalities, where previously the statutes were divided into two separate parts. And if we can refer to the slides at this time. Again, the purpose is to consolidate the city and county statutes that were previously in Chapters 168 and 153A and to merge them into a new chapter, 160D. Other related statutes that were merged include the zoning family care homes, regulation of outdoor advertising, and adult entertainment. As I stated earlier, the purpose was also to modernize and clarify and simplify the language that we all use. And those amendments also included that all parties agreed and were helpful and useful. No major changes in scope of local government authority were made. This next slide continues with some key points from 160D. It allows the authorization of zoning exactions, which are comparable to the subdivision exactions. Exactions in the performance guarantees generally allowed for zoning regulations will now be same extent and limitations as with the subdivision regulations and exactions. It allows clarity for the map adoption and record-keeping, clarify the different types of zoning decisions. It's important to note that you can now have conditional zoning and special use permits, but this is no longer a combined process. You cannot have a district with only special uses and you cannot do the concurrent rezoning and special use all in one process. It will now go back to the two-step process with the general rezoning to occur first and the special use issuance to occur in a separate proceeding. It also revised the subdivision performance guarantee standards, clarified the process for development agreements. Any exactions or standards put in place with some of those conditional zoning districts now have to be put in writing and all parties have to sign an agreement to those exactions. And it clarifies procedures and standards for special topic regulations. Here are just some examples or some screen grabs from our ordinance in different sections where we incorporated some of those changes for the 160D. We no longer use conditional use. Those are now considered special use permits as explained above. We switched out all references to the previous chapters of 153A and replaced them with the correct text referring to the 160D chapters. And then we made adjustments as needed with the language. Our next request was to make minor modifications to the existing chapters and text. Staff felt that it would be beneficial or useful at this time to take this opportunity to do an overhaul of the ordinance, if you will. We made grammatical changes that were noted throughout the entire ordinance. We omitted text in certain instances. With this particular screen grab, we had a list of definitions in the ordinance and we really couldn't determine why that list was prudent when we had the definitions in a table. So where there was some redundancy, we omitted text. And where there was clarification, sometimes we elaborated on that if there was a section that was not clear. On the next slide, again to the right, if there was a section that was not clear, we elaborated a little bit further on some of those points, as with the non-conforming or the expansion of the non-conforming uses. We also added some definitions to the definition table. We found sometimes there were uses in the definition table that we didn't have in the definition chapter, so we felt it was important to make sure that applicants could find those uses in both places to clear up any confusion when they were coming in to submit for an Our next request was to make modifications to Chapter 14 as well, which was our manufactured home park chapter. And the purpose behind this change or rewrite was in order to update the standards. And this has been a particular concern with our planning board as well. One of the things that we changed with the manufactured home parks was the definition. Currently, the definition of a manufactured home park is any property with two or more mobile homes on that single piece of property. We changed that to three. So that eliminated a lot of, or reduced the number of what we would classify a mobile home park throughout Gaston County. And it's also consistent with how the Tax Department defines a manufactured home park as well. Some other things that we incorporated were some maintenance standards and updates to the chapter. This chapter originally was laid out in a way that if you wanted to create a mobile home park, these were the standards that you would follow. As this board knows, you no longer are allowed to create a new mobile home park or manufactured home park in Gaston County. So enforcement or providing for new standards and updates was really, we felt was really important. And so that was the direction that we went with Chapter 14. Another item in this chapter were the issuance of operation permits. That was a tool that was used as part of enforcement. Zoning officials could pull an operator permit to maybe get, you know, a manufactured home park into compliance. So the elimination of the operator's permit was removed, as well as yearly inspections was removed from the text, which was another high point of this chapter. You also see that under the enforcement and penalties, we pretty much removed that entire section and referred you to Chapter 18. Chapter 18 is really where it allowed staff the tools to enforce any type of penalties and it also gave them a procedure and a standard, the same standards that they use for any other type of zoning violation. So it gave consistency across the board when enforcing any violations that they might have or occur. Our third request in the totality of our text amendments was to incorporate mining operations as a use with supplemental regulations. And I'd like to point out that, again, when we were looking at the ordinance as a whole, staff wanted to take this opportunity to make changes, you know, that we felt were necessary while we were replacing the entire ordinance. I think it's important to note that we are mindful of activity and interest in the northwest portion of our county. However, these regulations are not directed towards any one entity or corporation. These are standards that would apply, or we felt should apply, to mining use operations as a whole. So if we can begin here with the use table, we actually added mining and quarrying as a use itself, along with adding a whole new section devoted to regulations for that particular The next couple of slides will show you the screen grabs of the different sections that we added. Again, we put a definition in place for mining and quarrying, not to be confused with any other definitions. So in this supplemental regulations section, it also has a set of definitions that are unique to this specific use in and of itself. There are also a section devoted to development standards. If we continue, there are operation standards, the approval process for mining operations. And I've neglected to point out, if we can back up just a bit, that mining and quarrying are only allowed in the I-3 zoning district as a special use permit. So unless the property, just for clarification to the board, unless the property were already zoned as an I-3 zoning district, the applicant would have to do the two-step process and have it first rezoned from one general zoning district to the other and then would have to follow up with the separate process, which would be the special use permit. Again, there's additional regulations in the approval process for this use that are somewhat different from other uses that will mimic the conditional district zoning. Public information meetings are required with this particular use due to the potential project size and involvement. And enforcement, unlike other sections in the ordinance where enforcements can be found in Chapter 18, this particular use has its own subsection with enforcement that deals directly and specifically to this use. Mr. Chairman, I also have those individual chapters pulled up with a direct link should the board have any questions. I believe you were provided with that link so that you could look at each chapter individually. Our Director, Brian Skeba, is here to answer any questions, as well as, I'm not sure if Mr. Tom Terrell, who assisted, he's an attorney who specializes in land use law, assisted with a lot of our ordinance changes. So if you have any questions for us, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Penley. And I want to tell you, you've done an outstanding job on what you've done, what you presented tonight. That's a lot and we do thank you and the people in your group that put that together. So thank you. I will now take any citizens' comments. Seeing none, I will take questions from the board. Commissioner Hovis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Currently, currently with I-3 now being a new district. We moved forward with this. There is no current property zoned as I-3 currently in Gaston County, correct?
No, sir. We do have I-3 as a zoning district in Gaston County.
Okay. I thought when you were showing those things, I thought it said I-3 was new, it was only special permit.
No, my apologies. The I-3 zoning district is not new. That's the only zoning district that this particular use would be allowed in, is the I-3 zoning district. And I'm sorry if I confused you with my quick talking, kind of tripped over my words a little bit.
Correct.
So unless an applicant happened to purchase a piece of property that was already zoned I-3, which sometimes is difficult, you just don't stumble across a large piece of property zoned I-3.
Correct.
They would have to go through that two-step process where they would have to have it rezoned from whatever zoning district it is.
So I-3 is not just unique to this use?
To mining. No, sir. That's correct. It has other uses.
The way the short blip there showed it, basically I-3 was just for that.
Oh, my apologies.
Obviously, industrial, commercial, basically, is what I-2 and others are. I understand that. And I thought we had some other I-3s, but in looking at that, because it only talked about that one particular special use permit being required, because you were talking just about mining.
Correct. My apologies. I just did a snippet of that one use as opposed to showing you what was above and below it on the use table.
And in the northwestern portion of the county, do we have any I-3 currently existing?
We have some on the edges of the Town of Charrville's ETJ. I would have to check to see from memory.
But in the area, that's been a great question, there's no huge tracts of land that are currently zoned that way, correct?
Not any that I'm aware of.
That means they would be applicable to your two-step process.
Yes, sir. That would be correct.
My question was leading to get to that.
Yes, sir. That would be correct.
Everybody, the public's aware, everybody else is aware. Everybody, the public's aware, everybody else is aware that this would be a new direction in order for properties to be allowed to have that use to take place.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll add one thing to that in your leading question. So even if there was property that was zoned I-3, the special use permit would still have to be requested for mining to take place.
Correct.
Regardless to whether there, there was already a large tract that was I-3.
Correct. But then it's only a one-step process, not a two-step process.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Philbeck.
And I would assume the first process doesn't, the one step doesn't involve the commission.
So the general rezoning will happen, just like any general rezoning would happen. It would be a legislative process.
Don't tell me if you're in a I-3 currently, and we pass this ordinance, which you can do mining in an I-3, all they have to get is a special.
So to.
That wouldn't, that wouldn't come before the board?
It, it actually will.
Okay.
So we've, we've written this ordinance to where typically you would be correct, a special use permit would go before the Board of Adjustments.
Right.
But we've written this ordinance to where a special use permit for mining comes before this board.
Okay. I have another question as well. I did, on one of the slides, one of the penalties, I think it was the last slide, if you could pull that back up, please. Be it other violations, any violations of these regulations related to blasting or other development standards or operating requirements may result in the revocation of the special use permit at the discretion of the county manager or their designee. Shouldn't it be the commission? And if not, why? And if it's going to be the county manager, who is that designee? Because i- if, if you're going to pull someone's, basically, right to do what they want to do, shouldn't that come before the board?
So we were looking for enforcement tools and, and quick ways to get things done, right? And then so instead of having to bring information back to this board, for this board to have to go through the process, we felt like it might be quicker if it was something that we could take to the county manager for her to make a decision on, have they broken the rules that we've already got set forth and put in place? And if, if that be the case, that it was a way that we could get action from.
Okay. But when you're talking mining, you're talking hundreds of millions of dollars.
Correct.
I think that kind of decision, me personally, I think that's something should come from the board. And the, the reason I would say that is you can have a special meeting within a couple of days.
Right.
That's just not authority I think this board should give up. I, I think we're elected, if, if we're going to pass these, this type of zoning or ordinance, and, and people aren't doing what they're supposed to do, and you're talking hundreds of millions of dollars, I think that's something seven county commissioners should talk about openly in public, not just going to a, because the other stuff wouldn't even really be public. If you take it, if you have an issue with this mining company that's not doing what they're supposed to do under this right here, you just take it to the county manager. Yes, you could call some of the commissioners, but there's really no transparency with that. I, I think allowing that to come to the commission would force transparency. And if you're really having an issue, it'd give the public an opportunity to, to speak up as well. That, that's just my thought on that item. That would be up to the board.
I think that's a, I think that's a very valid point. And so that's an easy change for us to, to make, if that's something that y'all want to do.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Philbeck. Mr. Worley.
Well, I, I certainly appreciate what Mr. Philbeck has said. And it says the revocation of the special permit. I, I, like you, I think if we were going to revoke that permit, it should be discussed amongst this board. But maybe in certain situations, we should give authority to the manager or her designee to maybe suspend. Suspend operations in case they were violating something on, on a weekend, a Saturday, that quick action needs to take place, that we could say the manager or designee could suspend operations, the revocation would come back to the board. Suspending sounds temporary, revocation sounds like that's, you're finished.
So I would say, just for some kind of background on us, once an operation like this is, is opened up, we don't have a lot of bite back at, at the apple here. We don't have a lot of recourse to take. And so we were trying to build some into, you know, the goal is, is we shouldn't be breaking any rules, right? And, and truth be known, you know, there's consequences to actions, and you know your consequences here are that your permit can be revoked, so don't break the rules. But I understand what you're saying, and, and the fact of, we also need to put it out in public that those rules are being broken and why we're shutting that down. So I think that's an easy change.
Chances are if those rules are being broken, the public is probably bringing them to us, chances. And I do agree with Commissioner Worley that I would have no issue, you know, if it's a dire straits situation where the county manager could say, "We suspend operations." But before any of that is revoked, what we should do, or language that, that I could agree with, is that if the county manager happens to suspend, within, a special meeting can be called by the commissioners to discuss that and, and actually do something. I just don't want the authority of this board to go to one person on that big of a decision, especially because there will be no transparency with that.
So one thing I will say too, is we'll, we kind of need to make this decision, unfortunately, tonight with this, and rewrite that piece. That way we can move forward with it.
You good, Commissioner Worley? Mr. Hovis.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I concur with the comments of my other board members. What I think we need to do is add the caveat in there that the manager or designee has the authority to temporarily suspend the special use permit. And based on the, the direction of that, they would have 10 days to call a special meeting of the board on the date of that temporary suspension, where it would come back to the board with all the facts being done in a public hearing environment. And that would give you the two-step process, which allows immediate action to take place on staff's behalf. At the same time, comes back to the board for final authority and final word on direction forward in a public forum, much like we're discussing this ordinance tonight.
Okay. We can, we can.
I think that's fairly straightforward, fairly simple. And at the same time, this board can at any time call a special meeting to revoke anything we decide we want to revoke. We don't have to have the manager to, to step in. If we see something or something comes to this board's attention, all we have to do is tell our clerk, and our clerk can make that happen within the normal acknowledgement timeframes required by state general statutes. Correct?
That's only if we don't give it away under the.
No, I'm just saying, no, I'm just saying we could, yeah.
Yeah.
But we, we reserve that right.
Right.
On anything.
We'll make that adjustment now.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Does everybody agree? Ms. Johnson, do you agree with that conversation?
Yes, I do.
Okay. That way, so when we get to that point, nobody will, everybody's had a chance to weigh in. Thank you.
Speaking of you, Ms. Johnson, would you care to comment?
No, I agree with the, um, other commissioners on this.
Thank you. Brian, I have one quick question, and it, and it, I didn't see it when the, the text got sent to me, but via email. It's on the fencing. After decommissioning, I didn't see anything about the responsible party making sure that fence was always upkept. With that being said, whether it be the one we're talking about or other mines, there's got to be some kind of safety at some point to where if they leave, we can't just have an open hole or whatever. I didn't see that in there, and maybe we can do a text amendment later to something to that regard. But I need to see something that says the fencing is going to have to be after decommissioning. They're still responsible for that fencing that goes around there. It just can't be, you know, somebody knocks it down, whatever it may be. There's got to be some type of protocol, and I don't know how we do that as far as bringing it back or whatever. But I want to see something that we're after the fact for safety, because we've been talking about safety forever about these things, and we got to make sure that these are looked into. That's just my comment. That's not me amending anything.
Okay.
Any other commissioners wish to speak at this time? Mr. Philbeck.
One more. I, I just want to be clear for the public. You've said it, Commissioner Hovis has said it, I just want to say it again, because I know I'll get an email or a question. Voting for this ordinance is not a vote for any mining operation whatsoever. So this is just to regulate that if it happens. So I just want to make that clear.
We have no permits currently for any mining, or applications for any mining.
I'm going to stop both of you right now from that type of talk, because that was my next comment. But thank you. Citizens were also provided the opportunity to provide written comments to the clerk of the board prior to 9/27. Submission deadline was 6:00 PM. None were received. If there are no additional comments, I would declare the public hearing closed.
Hold. Mr. Chairman?
I will open it back up for you, sir.
We need to see this wording, or hear it. You, you said, "Before we vote." Am I correct, Ms. Buff?
I'm going to, I'll ask the board for a five-minute recess.
Okay.
Okay.
All in favor? Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. We're now in recess. We are now back into public hearing. Thank you for your patience, please. The goal was to be responsive without a temporary suspension, so we're trying to make sure we have that. If there are no additional comments, I will declare this public hearing closed. Before we proceed with the vote, I will ask the county attorney to provide comments regarding the planning board's recommendation. Mr. Sink.
The planning board voted unanimously, in fact, to approve the proposed zoning text amendments as revised, though it was seven to nothing, it was unanimous, based upon the following statement of consistency, that the proposed zoning text amendments as presented are consistent with staff recommendation, the comprehensive land use plan, and in compliance with North Carolina state laws, specifically North Carolina general statutes found in
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to be heard on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to amend the original motion to approve.
Oh, there's no original motion made. It's just a new motion.
I make a motion to approve the repeal and replacement of the UDO in its entirety, with the exception of the recommended revisions to Chapter 14, manufactured home park, which will remain as currently written until time for an in-depth review, and to revise recommended mining enforcement section to allow the manager to temporarily suspend, suspend the permit until a special meeting can be convened by the Board of Commissioners within 10 days to consider the permit being revoked.
I have a motion as read by Commissioner Philbeck. I have a second from Commissioner Worley. Any comments, discussion? At this time, I will call for the vote. All those in favor?
Yes.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Madam Clerk. The county commission will take citizens' comments on a public hearing to approve Gaston County Level 4 incentive grant to authorize economic development agreement, EDA, with the Trinity Capital Partners. Mr. Donnie Hicks, EDC Director, will provide a brief overview. Once he has completed his comments, citizens' comments will be taken. Mr. Hicks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What we're here to do tonight is to offer a Level 4 grant to a spec building project. They're not asking for any incentives that they would not normally receive, but in order to satisfy their investors and their lenders, they would like to have an economic development agreement from the county, which we normally do. So Trinity Capital Partners, based in Charlotte, is considering building an 860,000 square foot spec building at the Delta Business Park. That's where John Jenkins Grading is, if you're familiar with that area. They're going to take the site along the interstate and build a building there. And it's possible that in the future it could be expanded as much as to 1.2 million square feet if the tenant needed that at some point. The site's partially in the county and partially in the city of Gaston. So we've worked with a developer to clean that up over a period of time. We'll get a resolution next month, similar to the one that's in your agenda tonight. They'll allow the county to inspect that until its completion as a shell. Much as we're giving up our right at Gateway 85, we're going to ask them to do the same thing for us here, so that Mr. Skeba's group can go ahead and continue the review of those plans, also that Joseph Alm can do the soil sedimentation erosion control plan. So what we're asking for tonight is to approve a Level 4 grant to them that will lead to an economic development agreement between us and the company. We'll go to the city of Gaston on October 5th. They'll do the same thing. It'll also have an annexation agreement tied to there, so that we can clean it up, and it'll all be inside the city. And I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Are there any citizens wishing to make comment on this issue? Seeing none, any questions from the board of commissioners? Mr. Worley? Mr. Worley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hicks, I see the size of the building, but in the investment, did they indicate the total of jobs that may be created with this?
So this is going to be a pure spec building. It'll be built with no tenant in mind, but we've already chased a couple of projects out there, everything from a couple of hundred all the way to a thousand. And in warehouse product today, it's really hard to estimate how many employees per square foot we get. We'll see one that gets built at Gateway 85, that's a million and a half square feet, it only has 100 people.
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Philbeck. Excuse me. No written comments were received on this issue or this public hearing. If there are no additional comments, I will declare the public hearing closed. I will now take a motion from Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Philbeck. Any discussion, all in favor? Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. The Gaston County Commission will take citizens' comments on public hearing to approve Gaston County Level 4 incentive to authorize economic development agreement with Project Keith Corporation. Mr. Donnie Hicks, EDC director, will provide a brief overview. Once he has completed his comments, citizens' comments will be taken. Mr. Hicks?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is very similar to the previous item. Keith Corporation and their partners, based in Charlotte, want to build a spec building of up to around a million 250,000 square feet in Kings Mountain. It'll be inside the city of Kings Mountain, but on the Gaston County side. And so they, just as most of the other projects want, is that same assurance that that incentive package will be available to them and their investors and equity partners. So what we'd like to do is ask the board to offer them a Level 4 grant. They clearly exceed the $50 million threshold for that. The number you see in your agenda is 62 million, that's my number, that's what I think the tax value will be on our current valuation. Most likely, they'll invest more than that, we'll pick that amount up, and at some point, as we revalue, you could expect that to go up. 62 million.
Are there any citizens wishing to make comments on this issue? Seeing none at this time, any from the Board of Commissioners?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. No written comments were received in this public hearing, I will now declare the public hearing closed. I have a motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Philbeck. All in favor?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, it is unanimous, Madam Clerk. The commission will now take citizens' comments on public hearing to approve application for NC DOT Rural Economic Development Division Building Reuse Grant in support of Project Repel, and provide the required 5% local match. Mr. Donnie Hicks, EDC director, will provide a brief overview. Once his comments are completed, citizens' comments will be taken. Mr. Hicks?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a company based in Kings Mountain that would like to expand, we've been working with them for a number of years, trying to get the real estate where it needs to be, they need additional real estate to operate, and so we've been concerned that if we couldn't provide that for them, they might have to leave. They're not threatening that they're going to leave, but they cannot operate in the facility until it's expanded. So they've agreed to have an expansion of about $7.7 million, and they would then hire 14 people. We've partnered with the state of North Carolina. The Department of Commerce, through their Rural Development Division, has a building reuse grant. It allows an owner, as the operator, to go in and get money, based on the number of jobs they create, to help expand the building. There are limitations on what you can use that expansion money for, but if you meet all the guidelines, you hire the 14 people, then you get to keep the grant. If you fail to meet those obligations, I got to go get the money back from them. So we don't have any financial stake in it, other than that I may have to take the sheriff with me and repost some property at some point. We have to match that by 5%, the match used to be 50%, and that was burdensome for the county in some cases. If you had a project that created a lot of jobs, but didn't create a lot of investment, it created a problem for us. We've gone back to the General Assembly and asked them to drop that match, and there's some consideration, they may eliminate it. So our match for the $65,000 grant will be $3,250. That will be paid upon the completion of the employment. So we don't give that to them upfront, they have to create the employment, we'll do it.
Thank you, sir. Are there any citizens wishing to take comment on this hearing? Seeing none, are there any questions from the Board of Commissioners? Mr. Philbeck?
I want to understand this grant a little bit more. So $62,000 to hire 14 people?
Yes, sir. It's based off a formula, the state collects most of their money, obviously, on the income tax that the people pay. So they'll go through a model and look at how much income tax they think those people will pay over a period of time.
Can anybody apply for this?
It has to typically be a manufacturing or warehouse operation, and it has to be approved by the Rural Development Authority.
The Rural-
Yeah, so it's not available to everybody.
So this grant comes from the Rural Development? Okay, that makes sense.
Not everybody's eligible to use it, we are finally eligible to use it.
Thank you.
Any other questions this time from the Board of Commissioners? Commissioner Worley? Oh, no written comments were received for this public hearing. In addition, no comments will be added. I will declare this public hearing closed. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Commissioner Worley, seconded by Commissioner Hovis. All in favor?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson says yes, and it's unanimous, Madam Clerk. The county commission will now take citizens' comments on a public hearing to request permission to apply for NC DOT PTD FY 23, excuse me, fiscal year '23, we'll go ahead and put that in there for you, Donna. Community transportation grant program to provide rural public transportation services to provide the necessarily assurances and required local match. Now I ask Mr. Michael Kuhn, Adult and Aging Services Administrator, will provide a brief overview. Once his comments have been taken, we will now take citizens' comments. Mr. Kuhn?
Thank you, Commissioner Brown, Commissioners, Dr. Eagle. I'm here to request permission to apply for the North Carolina Department of Transportation, Public Transportation Division Fiscal Year '23 Community Transportation Program Grant. The purpose of that grant is to support public and human services transportation in rural areas where residents often rely on public transportation to reach their destinations. The grant includes a capital, planning, and operating assistance. There are three different portions. The administrative portion of the grant has a total amount of $199,888, with a 15% local match, which comes to $29,984. That includes the technology, utilities, telephone services, training and travel, office supplies, janitorial supplies, alcohol and drug testing for staff, and salaries and fringe benefits of a transportation coordinator and administrative support professional for that program. The second portion of the grant is operating. It's a total amount of $300,000 with a 50% local match, that's 150,000 local match. That goes towards the transportation of clients. And then finally, a capital portion of the grant that has a total amount of $80,250 with a 10% local match, which is $8,025. And that will be used to purchase one 25-foot light transit vehicle to replace one of our vehicles on our fleet that is aging out. That comes to a project total of $580,138 with a local match of $188,009. And I'm open to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kuhn. No written, oh, excuse me, any citizens wishing to comment on this hearing? Seeing none, any questions from the Board of Commissioners? Mr. Philbeck?
When this grant runs out, who pays for it?
Excellent question. We have received this grant, I've been here seven years, it's going on my eighth. We've received this every year since I've been here. And so I don't, I know the operating grant last year, we originally approved it here, and then DOT did not approve it for the $300,000, but we were able to use CARES Act funds to cover the transports for last year. For this year, Department of Transportation has reinstated the rope funds, and that's a rural operating services grant that we were able to use for the coming year. In addition, we have around $473,000 left in CARES Act funds that we will apply to transports for this year.
Okay, but when, at some point, probably that grant will run out, at some point, then what are we talking? Who's going to have to pay for that?
As far as the salaries, vehicles, and the transports?
Yeah.
Well, you know, as of, we've been able to pull down funds through other grants that the state has offered for that. We have some contracts with local human service providers that we're able to draw down funds through those to help reimburse some of the services. And to be honest with you, if all the funds weren't there, we would have to start to limit some of the rural trips and things like that that we provide.
I just think it's good when we're talking about grant monies for this board to stop, think about it, and at least be mindful that at some point, this could run out. And when it runs out, you're providing a service that people are still going to expect. And then if you can't, the counties end up picking up the tab. So just something, I'll definitely support this, but it's, at some point, it's just something the board needs to be mindful of. Not just yours, but all of these grants that create programs or different things. When that stuff runs out, somebody's got to pay for that. And that's going to fall, more than likely, back on the taxpayer.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Dr. Eagle?
That's a conversation we have, Mr. Philbeck, with every grant internally, as a part of our internal grant process and work policy. And your point's well taken, because at that point in time, if the grant funds are coming to an end, we have to have a conversation about continued service delivery or other mechanisms, and that cost ending with the taxpayer is always a concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Worley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've probably asked this question on previous grants, but it helps me to understand how many trips we're providing, weekly, monthly, yearly, so people can understand the trip cost. Per day, would we not be almost better off hiring it out completely? I know, I'm certainly supportive of the grant, but what are those weekly number trips, monthly, and say, for the year?
That's an excellent question, I think you actually did ask me that last year, I came prepared. We were impacted by COVID-19, and a lot of folks didn't want to take public transportation, and we had to social distance our vehicles and spend more time cleaning and different things like that. So it definitely impacted us this past year. But we had fiscal year '21, we had 34,691 trips provided. And we have divested out all of our Medicaid trips to the private sector already. We started working on that in 2018, and so those are already provided private sector. So we've already started to do that, and so we provide the local rural trips. The trips are funded by these and by our local human service provider contracts. And if we were to pull those contracts from those local human service providers, it would impact service delivery to those local providers, if they had to pull those. So we have restricted some of our trips, some of it due to COVID, some of it to divesting out. But I think we're still providing, I don't have a calculator in front of me, Commissioner Worley?
$14.57 per transport.
I think it's actually higher than that, because of some of the other funds that go in outside of this.
I'm just looking at this, $580,000, $39,000 transported.
Well, if you think about the average length of a trip being somewhere around seven to eight miles, if it's within the county, then you're looking at your per mile trip there being just a couple dollars per mile.
Mr. Johnson, do you have anything to add?
I don't, thank you.
Michael, I do. I just want to say something to you. You said you've been here seven years, I think for the first three. Me and you went at it every day about something, obviously, on this issue, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
That's why when Commissioner Worley asked that question, I want to let him know. I was on both sides of it, I had a person call me who's one of our vendors, and Michael got in, and when he took over this, we've had no issues. And I wanted to thank you for that, I wanted to commend you for the work you've done because you took something that was kind of broken, broke it up, you took it back, and you put it back together. It was awful. And I wanted to thank you for that, because I don't know if you hear that enough, but thank you from this board for making that go away from us.
That means a lot to me, here, I've put my heart into it, that's for sure.
Well, thank you. No written comments were received in this public hearing. If there are any additional comments, I will declare this public hearing closed. I will now take a motion on this issue?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Commissioner Worley, seconded by-
I'll say it.
-Mr. Hovis. All in favor?
Yes.
All against? Oh, unanimous. Ms. Buff?
Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes tonight's public hearing. The next item on the agenda is approval of the business agenda. Are there any revisions to the business agenda that need to be pulled from the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Seeing none, there's a motion on the floor to approve the business agenda. Commissioner Hovis, seconded, sorry, Ms. Johnson, sorry, seconded it. Motion made by Commissioner Philbeck. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Johnson, it is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Next item is approval of the minutes. You're provided a draft of minutes for the August 24 regular meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes as stated in the agenda.
And a closed session for September 14th. Are there any revisions that need to be taken at this time? Do I hear a motion to approve the motion as prevented? Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Philbeck. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. At this time, I will now take citizen's recognitions. Our next item on the agenda is citizen's recognitions. A portion of the board's agenda is set aside for the purpose of allowing citizens the opportunity to offer comments and suggestions. This comment period is not intended to require the commissions or staff to answer any questions or provide a response. Questions requiring response shall be answered as soon as possible through the county manager's office. Citizen's recognition will be limited to one hour. Comments will be limited to three minutes. As I call your name, please step to the podium, and the first person is? Thank you, that's what I wanted to hear. Next item is approval of the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by myself, Chad Brown. All in favor?
Yes.
All nays? Unanimous, Madam Clerk. The next item is, nothing was pulled from the consent agenda. Next item, next page. Next item is appointments. Commissioner Johnson?
No appointments at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Hovis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I have several, and I will do them all at one action. The Child Fatality Prevention Team, application has been received from Mr. Gary Williams. Community Child Protective Team, that's an at-large seat, and Law Enforcement Seat. It's also for Mr. Gary Williams, so I guess he can only serve in one capacity. So let's let him be the at-large person, and we'll look for somebody else for the other one. Just wanted to acknowledge he had applied for both. And the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, from Travis Page. I have those two before the board, and they're my motion.
That, Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Philbeck, seconded, Ms. Donna Buff?
You are correct, and he is appointed to both. I apologize, in my quick study of that line, I thought they were the both.
We'll take that second back, we'll wait on a second for the new-
Second.
Second by Commissioner Philbeck, all in favor?
Yes.
It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Commissioner Philbeck?
None at this time.
Mr. Worley?
Thank, Mr. Chair, I have one for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council tonight. Have an application for representing the juvenile defense attorneys from Ms. Veronica Monteleone, and I would make that a motion.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Worley, seconded by Commissioner Hovis, all in favor?
Yes.
Unanimous, Madam Clerk. I have none, but I will do the full board, do them separately. The Dallas Planning Board, Board of Adjustments, Dallas letter to recommend, and the application for the ETJ representative to be for Troy Traversi. Seconded by Commissioner Hovis. All in favor?
Yes.
All nays? As a four to one vote, Madam Clerk. The Lake Wally Marine Commission has asked for a reappointment requested for Paul Hartley.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Philbeck, all in favor?
Yes.
It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. The next item is reports, Commissioner Committee Reports, Commissioner Johnson?
No reports at this time.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Hovis?
Mr. Chair, I have no report tonight.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Philbeck?
None.
Commissioner, sir, thank you. Mr. Worley?
No such report.
No such report.
Thank you, and I have nothing to add as well. So, tell you about that. County Managers Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two items tonight. We can go through these relatively briefly. The first is an update on the census. I'm going to ask David Williams to come forward, and he will do that for you. Initially, you have a handout at your seat that provides some information. I think it's about three pages in total. I'll draw your attention to the third page where we've provided some township-specific information. David will hit the highlights, and then if you have any specific questions or need additional information, we'll be happy to follow up on that. After David concludes, we have two representatives from Charters of Freedom with us tonight, Mr. Ron Lewis and Dr. David Streeter, that will conclude my report. Thank you. David?
Thank you, Dr. Eagle. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, glad to be here this evening, giving you an update. Just kind of give you some history. Back in 2018, the county established a Complete Count Committee. This committee's been working extremely hard. We had one also in 2010, working hard to increase the response rate, citizens participating in the census. And just to kind of give you some historical data, in 2000, we had a response rate of 68%. That response rate relates to those who responded to the census. In 2010, it was 78%. And in 2020, right now, Mr. Chairman, we do not know, that information has not been received. But what we do know about Gaston County, the fact that Gaston County is growing, and this is the fastest growth that Gaston County's experienced since 1950 and 1960 growth rate. It's close to it, around 21,000, and that number is as of April 2020. So, we're actually much, probably a little bit larger than 227,943. I would draw your attention to the fact that a lot of counties throughout the state are, in terms of rural areas, we're going to continue to experience that growth, emanating from Charlotte, this metro area. And I would add that rural areas are losing growth, and they're moving to sort of metropolitan areas. That number from 2010 to 2020 was 21,857 people. And again, that number's probably going to continue to grow. You have some information there in terms of data gains across the board, in terms of demographic changes, in terms of housing, and also in terms of the different populations throughout the county. As Dr. Eagle has mentioned, on that second sheet, you'll see a pie chart which indicates and breakdown in the townships. All townships are growing, and all cities, cities are growing in Gaston County. That's a good thing in terms of growth, and then also trying to plan for it in the future. So, we're looking at, in terms of largest township in Gastonie at 92,000, smallest one in Trail was 16,714. However, the fact is that all of them are growing, and we project that that's going to continue through 2030. That number's probably going to be significant on the 2030 census. I've been working with censuses 2000. I probably won't be working with the censuses in 2030. Glad to be, glad to work from a community perspective, though. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
David, I want to thank you from all of us for what you've done with the census. You've been a part of it since I've been here, and always a big part of everybody who's involved. So, thank you to all your staff and everybody who becomes a part of that. But just want to see, any questions from the board for Mr. Williams? David, I'll ask the question just to say, what was the fastest-growing township? I'm sorry, I was riverbed, but go ahead. Next thing, I'll thank you.
I have a dispute to add.
I figured Commissioner Worley would like that, but David, like I said again, thank you. Dr. Eagle?
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll ask the folks from Charters of Freedom to come forward next. You have some material at your seat. I'll point out this booklet that has some additional information, and there's a PowerPoint deck that will be coming up, and we'll just kind of walk through the material, and I'm seeking your feedback, so that we can potentially continue discussions with Charters of Freedom.
Okay. Do we have the PowerPoint available? I see it here on this screen. I didn't know if the others could see it. Okay, there we go. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Dr. Eagle, thank you very much. We're very honored to be here tonight. We promised to be brief. I'm David Streeter. I am the Director of Education for Foundation Forward. My friend and colleague, Ron Lewis, is our facilitator and treasurer. And just a couple of things before I hand it over to Mr. Lewis. The Declaration of Independence, the United States Constitution, the Bill of Rights collectively are known as the Charters of Freedom. And we build these and put them in communities across the country, which we have a very good start at this point. I would like to say, though, we do not build monuments. It's a misnomer. A lot of times, people call them monuments, but instead, we call them settings. The reason so is because these documents collectively allow us to have all the freedoms and liberties that we all enjoy and practice every day, including to assemble like we are here tonight. A monument is something that we pay homage to or honor, because it's no longer with us. These documents are very much alive and well, as like I said. They provide us a lot of things that we enjoy every day. The other thing I would like to say before I hand it over to Mr. Lewis is that we are a political and a religious organization, and this simply means that we are not affiliated with any religious organization, nor are we affiliated with any political organization. We stand completely neutral as those things are concerned. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Lewis, and I guess I will stay up here and act as the remote control, as I did when I was a young boy growing up before the days of push-button for TVs.
Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. I am a retired county manager, and, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I actually enjoy these proceedings, because it brings back memories of times past. It took four counties for me to get a total of 38 years, so I hope that Dr. Eagle doesn't face that challenge of, she's doing such a super job here. But thank you for having us. Next slide. Who has been to the National Archives Building? Very good. Generally, when I ask that question in a group, I get about 10% response. But we take the experience from the National Archives Building, and we build exterior settings, as David said. Next slide. When you go through the National Archives, you go down this corridor, you go through these big brass gates, and you come into the actual rotunda where the Charters of Freedom are housed. The Declaration of Independence is on the left, the four pages of the Constitution are in the middle, and the original proposed Bill of Rights is on the right side. Next slide. As you might imagine, because of age and climate and other things, the documents, particularly the material that they were written on and the writing instruments of the day, the documents are barely legible. Of all of them, the Bill of Rights is the worst. You can hardly, is, you can hardly read what is written on the Bill of Rights. Next slide. Let me briefly tell you that there were two of our founding fathers that were big on education. Of course, Benjamin Franklin was, he played a number of roles, but, you know, Ben was in his 80s, and many of the founding fathers were still in their 20s. So, anytime they got stuck and didn't know the answer to something, they would go to old Ben, and Ben had the answer for them. So, he's known as the sage. Of course, Thomas Jefferson was the third President of the United States and wrote a great deal, practically all, of the Constitution. Next slide. If you look there, you'll see that the education system that we use today is very similar to what these two founding fathers created in the 1700s, with the primary level, the secondary level, and the third level. Let me bring your attention to that third level. Regardless of which side of the aisle you prefer in Washington, DC, whether you're on the left or the right, you'll have to admit to me that there's not a lot of culture of virtue in Washington today. And the founding fathers were huge on that statement of culture of virtue. Next slide. This is the old courthouse in Burke County. This is where the concept came forward. Vance and Mary Jo, our founders, had just, had been to Washington to visit, and Vance Patterson tells a story. Took him 60 years to get to the, to Washington to see the, all the different components of our beautiful city there. And he brought the passion back that he experienced at the National Archives Building. And on the lawn at the National Day of Prayer, he and Mary Jo decided to build the Charters of Freedom, so that the students and others in Burke County could experience the same experience that he and Mary Jo had had in Washington. Next slide. So, we created Foundation Forward. It's established as an educational nonprofit organization, and as you can imagine, we realized real soon that we were going to be spending large amounts of money, and we had to have a passage for those funds, so we created the nonprofit of Foundation Forward. Next slide. The scope of the project is design and build replicas of the Charters of Freedom, as you can read there on this slide. We like this, we like the setting to be open to the public, centrally located, 24/7 access, and high visibility, and good foot traffic. And I'm sure that you know Gaston County far better than I, and that you're thinking in your mind now where a great spot for the Charters of Freedom would be. Next slide. Again, we take that experience from the National Archives Building and build exterior settings. They're designed to last between 300 and 500 years. Now, I don't know how, Madam Clerk, maybe you'll still be here. But I don't know how we're going to test that, but our designers said that, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to pick on you. Remember, I'm an old county manager, and the clerk is the most important position in the organization. Anyway, the Declaration of Independence on the left, the four pages of the Constitution in the middle, and the Bill of Rights is on the right side. Next slide. We go subsurface three and a half feet, and we pour 19 tons of concrete in that hole. Our philosophy and our theory and our belief is that you put more underground than you put above ground, if you want something to stay. Next slide. That's what, that's what it looks like once the core is completed. The side displays are four-by-fours of solid concrete reinforced, and the middle is four-by-16. Next slide. On the top of that, we put trays to hold the documents. Now, the trays are either reinforced concrete again, or molded concrete, or we have used Indiana limestone for them. The first ones that we made before we learned about the magic of concrete and how it's used in so many purposes today. But the tray is built to handle the documents. Next slide. The documents themselves are one-fourth edged bronze. They weigh 60 pounds apiece. And I know that for a fact, because I used to carry them across western North Carolina. And believe me, they do weigh 60 pounds apiece. Next slide. That's what the first one outside of Washington, DC looked like when we dedicated it in 2012 at the Historic Courthouse in Morganton. Declaration of Independence on the left, the four pages of the Constitution in the middle, and the Bill of Rights is on the right. Next slide. We asked some artists to give us a symbol, an emblem. We contracted with them to produce this emblem for us. The eagle represents the Declaration of Independence, bold, strong, defiant. The stars above represent the articles of the Constitution. The stars below represent the original proposed Bill of Rights. Next slide. In the back of the time capsule, and, excuse me, in the back of the center setting, which is the Constitution, we put a time capsule there. We would like letters, Commissioners, from the Commissioners, perhaps the school superintendent, the mayor, dignitaries, historians within the county, so that when we open on Constitution Day, September the 17th, 2087, again, Madam Clerk, you'll probably be there. And when we open the time capsule, they'll have a flavor for what Gaston County was like in 2021 or 2022, when we seal that time capsule. Next slide. There's a story here, but for time purposes, I'll not go into it, other than to say that that's a before and after picture of the first setting. You can't see the setting for those old dead trees, and we were able to take those out and display the setting. Next slide. This is Burnsville, North Carolina, the first brick setting that we made. This is Asheville, North Carolina, the second granite. And it's a beautiful setting there. It's at the complex in Asheville. I see some heads nodding, so perhaps you've seen that. Next slide. This was our first Indiana limestone. This is in Indiana. Being an ignorant patriot, I guess, I'll call myself, I thought that Washington, DC was all concrete. But to show how uninformed I was, most of it's Indiana limestone. And of course, in North Carolina, we have some rich deposits of limestone as well. But that, this one is Indiana limestone for the state of Indiana. Next. Noblesville, Indiana. Next. We hope that the setting here gets a lot of use. You can use it for multiple things, for Veterans Day, Memorial Day, other kinds of events. It makes a good backdrop for that. Next slide. In Jacksonville, Illinois, there were 200 people in the downpour and rain to see the dedication of the Charters of Freedom. Next slide. This is what it's all about. We envision teachers bringing their classrooms to the Charters of Freedom, to teach them about the founding fathers, our founding documents, to teach them. One thing I get emotional about when I talk sometimes, and I'm probably going over my 10 minutes, Mrs. Manager, Ms. Manager. The gentlemen who were our founding fathers were brilliant. There's no doubt in my mind that they had the hand of God on them when they did this. And let me remind you that many of the early transcripts that Thomas Jefferson penned when he was creating the Constitution actually had abolition language within those original documents. But he knew, and others knew, that at the time that that would not pass. We didn't have the support at that time. It should have been done, but because of the culture and the nature of our company, our country, it wasn't the right time for those. But they were smart enough to know that as the society changed and as the country changed, that there would be a time when major amendments would be made to the Constitution. Henceforth, the 13th, 14th, 15th, 19th, and the 24th Amendment, known as the Civil Rights Amendments, make us all the same, citizens of this great country, the United States of America. Next slide. If you look real closely there, you might recognize Benjamin Franklin. That's yours truly. I've been known to dress as Ben. I'm trying to lose his profile, but for some reason, that's harder to do than it. I'm not having very much luck losing Benjamin's profile. But that's a group of homeschoolers. Do we have any educators in here? I look forward to the day, thank you, ma'am, I look forward to the day when our public school students are as enthusiastic about the Charters of Freedom and the founding of our country as the homeschoolers are, because they flock to the Charters of Freedom, and they embrace them, and they love them. Next slide, David? There are 3,143 counties, boroughs of Louisiana, parishes in this country. Our goal over the next 10 years is to build as many of those as we can build. Next slide. It's all about education access in community. Next slide. That's a park that we're building in our national headquarters in Valdez, North Carolina. We will have actual statues of five of our founding fathers in that park. Now, I'm going to open up for questions, but before I do, I want to tell you, I'm not selling you anything, Commissioners. We don't spend your money. As of this day, with God as my witness, we have not spent the first tax dollar, whether it be local, state, or federal tax dollars. Now, my guess is that will change, because we're seeing now some maneuvering take place. take place to where our founding father, our, our founder, Vance Patterson, may agree. Uh, as an old county manager, I've told him at least a dozen times, Vance, let me spend the county's money, and he has said, no, Ron, we're not going to do that. But there's some things in the works right now that, that may change that. I, I, I'm very proud to be the treasurer of Foundation Forward, and to this date, I can honestly tell you that we have not spent a tax dollar. Now, we will take, uh, in-kind services, but not direct county dollar contributions. Now, that's my story, and I'm sticking with it.
Well, thank you so much, sir. It means a lot, but I'm really upset.
Why is that?
You didn't bring Santa. Says Santa. Just making sure, but thank you so much for your presentation.
Let me tell you about Santa, since you've asked, Mr. Chairman. Santa is our construction manager. He will be in Gaston County when we construct the Charters of Freedom.
We look forward to it. We thank you so much, sir, for coming tonight, and-
I apologize for going over-
No, no, you're, you're certainly all right. Manager, uh, do you have anything else left that you'd like to say? Well, I'm, I'm, I, I want to come to the manager, and then we're going to come back to that. I have it on my script. Please calm down. Dr. Eagle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I, I simply wanted to provide an opportunity for you all to hear directly from the Charters of Freedom, um, so that we can have conversations around, uh, furthering the dialogue, um, and, and Gaston County potentially, um, hosting, uh, hosting this, but, um, I'll, I'll defer to the board.
Thank you. Any questions from the Commissioners? Mr. Philbeck?
I'd just say I'm 100% supportive. I don't know where something like this would go. We do have a beautiful courthouse, um, but that's, you know, I guess something for a later date. But thank you for what you do. I don't think many realize, up until 1776, every nation on the face of the earth was ruled by dictators. 1776 was the first nation ever on the face of the earth to have freedom of its people. And that's a big deal. And there's, and the reason you don't have a lot of youth, you know, you talk about, you'd like to get more excitement. Well, we will, one day, as people start losing freedoms, because sometimes you don't cherish what you have until it's gone.
Amen.
Uh, and I think anytime we can have a message like this in our community for our people, because I, I'm going to tell you, most, I'm all over the place, speak to a lot of different people, and there's a lot of people that have no clue where our rights come from, at all. Uh, so I'm 100% supportive of this. Afterwards, I'll gladly give you my number. I'll be glad to make a donation to what you're doing, uh, and anything that I can do personally to help, uh, I'll be glad to. But, but I think this is very, very important for our community. And a lot of times, this, a lot of this stuff ain't even, uh, I, I don't think taught in a way that it should be, uh, in my opinion. But, uh, thank you for your time, for your effort, 100% supportive, and anything that I can personally do, I'm here. Thank you.
Commissioner. Any other questions from the board? Mr. Worley?
A quick comment, Mr. Chairman. I thank both of you again for the presentation tonight. I, I had no idea how these, um, well, you, it's not a monument, you, as you said, but these structures came to exist, uh, but, uh, I certainly am 100% supportive, and I, I have an excellent, uh, idea for a place, and hopefully we can discuss, discuss that in the future. Look forward to, to meeting with you all again, and then the rest of your committee and boards.
That's certainly your decision. You, you tell us where to put it. Okay?
Well, thank you, gentlemen. It, it's been a pleasure, and we look forward to it.
So, so thank you. That, that concludes my report. Staff will continue conversations, uh, and we'll update you.
Thank you, and we look forward to that. The Attorney's Report.
No such report this evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes our meeting for tonight. One second, sir. Our next work session is October 12th at 6:00 PM here in the Harley B. Gaston Junior Forum Courthouse. Thank you for watching. If you have any questions, please direct your comments to Ms. Donna Buff, 704-866-3196. I can't fight this feeling anymore, as Bob would say. Buenas noches, Gaston.